I should have just like ended up down.
I'm sorry.
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 They're not marching band, but still like care about it or passionate about it, want to be involved. That concert's coming up on Monday, the number four. That'll be an idea. And then we switch bands at trimester to kind of our freshman band and our 10, 11, 12 band or concert in the seminary band. And that concert for us will be in January to put together a lot of other stuff. Then you can do more age appropriate music and write down the freshmen and kind of get a small trial by fire when they come into fall wind on summer. To kind of do an average of what the seniors want to do and what the freshmen can do and kind of meet and deal with. But they're doing a really good job. So those are the next two things coming up for us. But otherwise, I guess, uh, if you have any questions for myself or any students, um, thank you for your time. We appreciate you having a chance to share it with me.
Will you do it next year? Will you go to college in team band or from our team band or you don't know yet?
I'm not marching band because uh, that's a big thing, especially in college. One of the great things about our gathering is that it's free because it's a class. But um, when you get into higher level bands or if you're even in any of the bands that we compete against, there are students that are paying like hundreds to thousands of dollars. You want to get into the higher level. So this marching band is a really great opportunity. Just even if you can't do it in the future, you can do it now.
What interests you people?
Um, I believe also that's.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's having anything to do with both questions.
And do you guys know where you're going?
I'm looking.
I think wasn't.
Oh, my guy was going to university with some.
So I went to Iowa State and marching band practiced the same time as the concert choir. A concert choir only had 50 voices and I was in the concert choir. So I couldn't do marching band. Marching band got to go to all the bowl games for free. So choose one. I was going to major our high school band. We'd have 100 musical instruments and then another 30 colored guard. I really think the competition part that it really does force you to come to that. And the exhibitions are fine because you feel that pressure. But I think when you're depending upon each other to make the right step or not run into each other, it really does. And then yeah, hang out and that's.
There, have you noticed many of the previous groups that we've had, like every group that this is hands down like the smartest and strongest. But every, all those people that give us numbers there, we record feedback tapes for us essentially. So we get like, as we are doing our thing, they're popping into a tape recorder, doing us stuff to work on. Every single one of them has seen us for multiple years and every single one of them has commented on the video that they've seen from the students here. So they're doing the right thing and absorbing what they're doing. It's awesome.
I was gonna say both ways before you cross.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was gonna say something to him. Both the buses, all these buses. I was wondering about the sound. I'm glad Nate said something when we got it. Chad had to, no, it was, he wasn't hearing us. The mic wasn't working. The system, Chad usually is here, but he's doesn't know it right now.
Nate, are you there? Can you hear us?
He's muted.
Can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Yes, I couldn't hear anything till up to about two minutes ago.
Yeah, I was on my end. There's like four options for microphone. I had the wrong one.
Oh, that's fine. I was just reading lips. I don't know if you can see me, but.
No, it's like you're in a dark room.
Well, I'm in an office, but I'm not sure how my wife's computer works. So my apologies.
It's fine. We can hear you. That's always.
Okay. Well, anyway, thank you so much. Of course, uh, most of you know me. My name is Nathan Stork. I have, uh, born and raised in Roberts. Um, I, my wife Tricia is a therapist for the elementary school. And we have four children, one in each school, two in the high school. So we love the running around, you know, wouldn't change it for the world. Um, my experience with the school board, if you read, uh, my application is nothing. However, um, I do have 11 years under my belt for the village of Roberts. Um, I was instrumental in building the Hazen Meckin Community Library and, um, the CDA Board, which is the Community Development Authority, which built the industrial park in Roberts for 12 years. And, um, the Tavern League of Wisconsin, I am a director for, which helped grow my business. Um, we raised a lot of money for the county food shelf. Um, we raised a lot of money for the county food shelves, et cetera, backpack programs. At a Johnston Memorial Dart Tournament, which gives back to the school and two or three scholarships. Um, and I do believe that students first, you ask, you know, what, what your theory is here. Um, I'm more than humbled to be asked to fill in uh, in this vacant position until April. Um, if you see me not fit, just kick my butt out of there. That's just fine. I just want to be, I'm, I'm one of those that I don't want anything. I do it for the community. I, I wasn't a village trustee. It's only because I care. And that's the reason. And that's why I'm not there right now because I'm hosting two hundred people up here at Ready Randys for fundraisers that give to all the food shelves. So my apologies, this was set back in April, so I have to, I would be there for sure if I could do that. Um, I just love that SEC schools are one of the top in the state of Wisconsin, honestly. You can go through any school district um, as far as economics or anything. And um, I just think it's wonderful. So I'll take this opportunity if you'll let me. I, if you have any questions of me, I'm more than willing to answer. I'm sorry you can't see my shiny face.
Usually Dave's got a list, so.
Hey Nate, this is Brad Wester. Do you have any concerns from uh, being a business owner in Roberts to doing the school board and those two mix it?
Uh, no, that's yes, absolutely. That's a great question. I shouldn't say no, yes. So when I was a village trustee, I was the only trustee that worked in town. The other six worked out of town, so I'm used to people coming in because they can come in and find you. That any given point in day, so it is a concern, but I, I handled it for eleven years. Sometimes I just say, this is not the time to talk. I'm busy working, can't do it. You'll have to meet me at a board meeting or well, when we were on the village board, we did five, we had to be on four boards, so five, minimum five meetings a month. So that was a little more stressful, plan meeting, regular village board, CDA, library board, you know, so that was a lot, but. Just so you know the background there. I don't know if I answered your question, Brad.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, you'll have to be prepared for our rigorous meeting schedule. We'll double that number.
I, I might need to check with my wife on that one. He's kidding.
We do have, we do have one rule that we've imposed since I've been on the board is Jeff Redmond. We end the meeting the same day it starts.
Yes, so I will, I, I see, I don't judge any of that. Uh, the like on the village board, if we got out of there before eleven thirty PM. We counted our blessings, literally, so we're not worried about it.
Any other questions? Should we go to motion or? Right? Would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve nation's start as you know, temporary board seat number through April.
All right, Derek made the motion, Dave second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, welcome to the club.
Okay, thank you. Just gotta let me know what to do now.
Yeah, next steps, you would just come to the next uh, board meeting. Uh, Kelly will, well, Kelly will be in touch with you, get you all set up email and get your laptop and get you all your, all your board information prior to the next meeting. But then the next um, meeting um, is uh, October sixteenth, I believe, or twenty third. October, November twentieth. Yeah, and uh, with the board development meeting at five PM first, that's, we have one per quarter. Typically it's been on a Sunday night, but didn't work this time, so we thought we'd do it in one night. Five o'clock board development for two hours, seven o'clock board meeting, and then you would take the oath office uh, the seven o'clock board meeting.
Well, I'm not worried about it as long as um, Kelly will reach out to me.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, that's how I found out about this. I didn't know that this was happening until Friday afternoon. All right, thank you so much. I'm sorry I can't either. But my kids play with this laptop, so they probably broke the camera. God knows.
We're good. Thanks, Nate.
All right, Dave, have a good night.
All right, moving on, comment by board members and superintendent, referendum update.
So a couple of little things that are finishing up, the um, window for the softball press box had been backordered, so that actually came in today and they. Were finishing up, might even be finished by the end of the day with, with siding, the window is in around one o'clock, I know. Um, and then the materials for the um, athletic storage shed that's going to go back are supposed to arrive tomorrow. So that'll go up pretty quick, uh, might even be done. Mostly by, by November first, then there's some internal um, cages and, and, and lighting and electrical stuff, but the structures go up very fast, so. That'll be done and be able to get um, a lot of that equipment in there before the snow flies, so that'll be nice. That's really the last major project and then just minor work throughs with fume extractors, et cetera, things like that.
We're right at budget, so that's good. Open house.
October thirtieth, Wednesday, October thirtieth, four to seven thirty. You do not, you're normal and it's scary enough.
You can wear the panther. What is that panther?
You need the panther.
Yeah. You would have been the trips, you would have been the person helping everybody. Double legging them. All right. Uh, do you guys have any questions or thoughts about the referendum from where we're at?
We'll have Eric come back and do kind of a final report next month.
All right, um, moving on to fall regional meeting, that's this Wednesday, I believe it starts at six.
I've got the van reserved. Yep, yep, uh, for five thirty. Um, I, I couldn't go, then I was gonna go, and now I can't go, so. Um, after to coordinate the transportation, um, somebody would just need to pick up the van at the bus garage at five, five thirty.
You want to drive? Are you going?
Yeah, I'm going.
You want to drive it? I'm not a fan of driving.
All right, so. I'll let you know then, um, the details, usually just as vans outside with keys and visor, et cetera.
So what time are we meeting?
Five thirty would be a good time and social starts six, dinner six thirty.
Okay. Meet here or meet at the middle school? So five thirty, middle school parking lot this Wednesday for the regional meeting. And everybody's gone, right? Very good. Okay, moving on to staff appreciation stones, that was last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago now. It was good, you were, Brad and I were at the high school. So everybody, I love you guys. You were gone.
You did, they were delicious as ever.
Yeah, she said she claims the baking temperatures and. Turned down the fan.
So maybe they were even better than ever.
Any other reports? All right. Uh, then we will move on to third Friday count update.
Just uh, real quick, kind of uh, visual, the third Friday count. Um, overall, it's, it's uh, two sided. You'll see last year it was one thousand six hundred fourteen, the far bottom right. One thousand six hundred fourteen is our official third Friday count. One thousand six oh three this year, so um, down eleven overall. But the good news is the bottom left, uh, one thousand eight hundred and nineteen total students that we're educating in person and virtually. Uh, and is up to one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six this year. Um, uh, mostly in parts to our virtual school part, so um, that's been a, a very good thing for us. Uh, third Friday counts down a little bit, but overall, and again, overall, we're able to bill those districts for those students per day. Whereas the third Friday count is a moment in time that the budget, which will be approving tonight, is set on for the entire year. We could have fifty kids move out, fifty kids move in, and it doesn't change that. Um, whereas when they're open enrolled by day, um, we do, it is accurate daily, whether they move in or move out. So kind of good news, bad news, I'd say overall, good news. Um, I don't know a district like, I mean, in our middle border, um, everyone is, is down, I mean, everyone. Um, so for us to only be down eleven is, is a win in my, my opinion. There's that in our conference fifty to a hundred, they're, they're down.
Are we still doing the marketing side?
Yeah, I just got the report today. It's uh, point one seven click rate again, really good. Um, we, we had an internal conversation about just changing up a few words because they can see which ones um. Worked the best, get the most clicks, so yeah. No, not in the, not in the virtual academy and that's, you'll see, yeah. And coming up in the administrative report and on this too, you know, it shows we're up at all time high for virtual.
Is uh, is the other conference schools, I don't know how to be, we'll talk about it, but kind of similar or lower.
It's exactly that. They're, they're graduating more than they're bringing in the birth rates.
You know, like the lower, yep.
Yeah.
Did you see that the grades were smaller? The, the number of kids, the number of residents that the grades have been smaller in the past than, than they were currently or we have.
No, the cohort, the cohort survival rate, if they're hundred and twenty in first grade last year, there's a hundred and twenty, hundred, you know, it's no more, I think deviation than two for each grade. Uh, majority are up, it's just that the four K and kindergarten students coming in, those classes are smaller than the graduating one. That's a trend throughout the state. But we are able to, we don't control birth rates, obviously, we can control attracting, you know, students and the virtual school. Again, I signed four more today, they're still coming in. And it reached quite a, quite a lull there, I'd say for last three weeks or so, where's? One or two a week, but seems to be picking up again.
As you can see, twenty twenty-three, grade twelve, hundred and twenty-five. Is twenty twenty-four kindergarten, so those hundred and twenty-five were graduates.
Yep.
Grade one, hundred and four, ninety-seven.
Yeah, so it'll only be down elevens.
Thank you. Moving on to scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. We have strategic plan, one point six portrait of a graduate senior capstone report. Principal Staff Post, uh, Brian Johnson and RJ Delta.
Thanks for having us. So we were hoping to talk with you a little bit about the one point six portion of the strategic plan and make sure that. We are on the same page and heading in the right direction for what you had envisioned that to be. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the virtual academy and then Brian and RJ will fill you in on high school. The virtual academy obviously needs to look much different than what they're doing in high school, so I want to talk a little bit about that tonight. Um, as you know, there's a lot of influx in and out with the virtual academy, so we met, as soon as we knew um, what you were. Planning as far as the strategic plan, we started meeting in the spring as an entire staff to talk about. What this could potentially look like, what makes sense for these kids that are very transient. What makes sense for the teachers who are already teaching lots of classes with lots of kids. So we started with a big group and just kind of came up with an outline of what we thought the class could be. Um, and then over the summer, a smaller group of us met biweekly to talk through this, the class creation. Um, and what those main components could then break down and look like, so that's what I want to talk to you a little bit about tonight. Also with the virtual academy students, a lot of them are coming in. Credit deficient, so we had to make this something that they were going to be willing to take on. Not a battle that we wanted to fight with them on getting them to be, but something that they would take ownership of. So we did tie a small credit amount to the class and we are assigning it to all of our seniors. Um, with a past fail of grade and just quarter credit to make sure that there is some ownership in that class. So let me show you. What we came up with. So Carolyn Munt is our high school math teacher for the virtual academy. And she agreed to take on the creation of the class in Google Classroom, which is new for us. Most of our classes are purchased through vendors. We have not created classes until this year. We've started creating some of our own English courses, we're highlighting those this year. And the capstone we thought would be a perfect addition to a Google Classroom class. So that is one of our two classes that takes place in Google Classroom. But we are able to tie it to the platform that the students already log into, so they're still logging into one place to find it. Um, tracking is a little bit different. Carolyn has to go in at the end of each week and enter what kids have turned in, so we can keep track of that. So that the reports that go out to families on Sundays are accurate. Um, so parents can see what's been driven and what hasn't been in all of the classes and including these additional classes that we're creating. So we determined as a team working on this that we wanted to have three sections to this class. One that was academic based, one that was based on their service to others. And one that was based on service to themselves and trying to better yourselves. So the, the purpose and the kids have this in the class, we stated the purpose for them and then gave them a large menu of options for each area. So the academic piece was to showcase what they've accomplished throughout their schooling, little without us, wherever they're coming from. And the goals that they have at their high school range greatly for our students. Um, the service to others was to show what they've accomplished by volunteering and giving back to the community. And we explained to them that when we serve, we look outside of ourselves, beyond our powers and seek to bring value to others. And then service to self was to prepare them to be the best version of themselves and look inward and recognize what would provide a sense of purpose and balance. I think that is often times the same for our students. So these are just a few examples. So we gave the kids. A list of probably thirty different options for each of the categories and we also made it very clear to them. That we are a bunch of adults sitting in a room talking about these options. And if they had things that they thought would be a good fit, to please bring those to us and we would add those to the course for them. So we've had a lot of students setting up post-secondary school visits. Um, we've definitely had some kids doing the ASVAB, the FASL kind of goes along hand in hand with the skirts that are finding to the secondary schools. Um, college applications, scholarships, these are some of the most popular that we've seen so far. Didn't want to overwhelm you with the list of them, but here's, here's a few. Um, they are required to complete two in each category, internals and of course. Service to others, um, these are some, again, some of the popular ones that kids have been doing. Um, a lot of helping out neighbors, helping out friends, donating to uh, food pantries, that sort of thing. Um, and then service to self, the interest inventory personality test has been a popular one. Tracking sleep for thirty days, creating lists of coping skills, run or walk in five Ks, those are some of the, the many ideas. And then at the end, what they need to do is take these six things that they've done to for each category. And they need to make some type of a presentation for us. And they're presenting to either their capstone teacher, which is Miss Munt, or their student advisor, so they, every student has a student advisor. Um, I do, the timing of this video that I have to show you was that the universe was speaking to us for this presentation tonight. So this video came in this morning and the student was having trouble getting the audio to work with the slideshow. So he shared his slideshow separately, which I won't share with you because the video is still uploaded in and of itself. So this is him talking. So this is him talking through his capstone. And then at the end, he just has this beautiful testimony for the virtual school that we've not cut and clipped with him to send you to the website. But I'm hoping this will work so you can see.
All right, um, I'm going to go through my capstone presentation. Um, I hope this is the right way to do it because I can't figure out how to uh, actually, um. I'm excited on camera through the computer. I'm looking at some stuff online, but I can't figure it out. So I pulled this course, I'll play the communication through that too. Um, but uh, let me start it now. So um, this is going to be my capstone presentation, um, by the hours, um. The activity, the first activity, um, I then the activity I did was on the secondary school. Um, and I'm happy because I did get, um, accepted into the school and I will be attending, um. Second semester, which will be spring of twenty twenty-five. I will be there, um, January twenty-second of next year, which I'm really excited. To and I'm happy that I did it and I'm excited to see what the future brings. Um, so the second activity. Um, will be academic too, um, and that's applying for a, or you know, not applying. Being enrolled in a college course and fortunate for me, I'm a full five, I attend truck driving, um. Truck driving school, um, all day long and um, I also ran two classes on high classes. And that would be composition and speech. Um, so let's move on to service to others. Um, my first service to others was to my neighbor, which was, which was previously actually United Elementary Teacher. At Sunkerset, um, and so I, I got it. Um, mechanically because I'm pretty mechanically honed and you know, I'm a liar and so I'm always happy to help out and just like, and I decided to disimprove of. Um, there's any type of excellence that's of, uh, you know, making out. Um, the second service to others would be, um, me, like I ever started out, this is just one example of me doing so. I do it quite frequently, you know, my neighbor in town, they have a really good relationship, they'll help me out, they help me out. Um, so yeah, that's, that's improved with that, um, slideshow, um, my service to self, um. First attempt is registering vote. Um, I hope you can read my registration slip and I hope there's no personal information on there, as you know. Yes, first is called, I'll be voting, uh, elections, uh, November, November, uh, so that was my service to self, number one. My service to self, number two, was uh, taking a personality test. And um, you can see I took a screenshot of my results, um, and um, that's, that was cool. I liked putting that, um. And uh, that just wants to thank for capstone, um, but then, um, I want to thank you guys. For everything you guys have done for me, um, I, I enrolled in school, uh, last year, junior, first year, or first year with you guys, with my junior year. Um, and I've been, I've been nothing but good luck. You guys, boy, they're really good to me. And really happy to uh, be involved in such a great environment and um, be surrounded by uh, teachers and um, staff that want to help me out. And you guys have a really great for what, um, so I just want to say thank you because this will probably be the last time, or not necessarily the last time, but one of the last times that you'll hear from me. Uh, before I move on to college and I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity, um, to do this program because I know a lot of people don't get to. And um, it's truly a great program. I really like what you guys are doing. And I think that uh, this is gonna be, uh, I think in the future, I think it's gonna be the future, not necessarily the future, but I think a lot more kids are gonna get involved in it. And um, I got nothing to say about you guys. You guys have been great. So uh, thank you very much. I hope this works out, I hope this, this works. I mean, it's the slideshow if I even know today, but um, I would have rather. Um, got it on the computer with like my little painting corner, but I would quite figure that out. So um, it works. Thank you very much, um, you know, does appreciate everything you guys have done. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
This personality test was the executive, which is structure, efficiency, critical principles. Clearly, as a senior who's spread, I think clearly needs to head off to, I think it was Stell that he's attending in January. That doesn't happen often with our kids that were done and then they're off to college in January. They stay with us and do some classes, but he's already taken advantage of sixteen of his eighteen college credits that we can pay for. Hence his wanting to get out and start in January. So. Any questions? I would love your feedback and where we're going with this. We can make tweaks as needed. This was just. Putting our heads together and coming up with what we thought might be useful for the kids that we.
Do you, is it, kids coming, junior or kids coming all the time? Is the capstone something you tell about their senior year or are you telling them that, hey, this is something you could. Uh, work towards? How does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this year, it, the seniors were told in August that this was the plan. Moving forward, we're going to level juniors. No, so we do a kickoff event on the first day of school with all of our new kids. And we record it and send it out to those that don't attend. And we do the same thing for second semester. So when we do our second semester kickoff, we will bring this up to the juniors since we already missed that window. Um, so that they're prepared, they can be keeping track of things and starting to new plans.
Do you have anything you've already identified as something you want to do different? That X go around, or still kind of feeling it out?
We're still kind of filling it out. It's pretty early yet, but so far things are working out really well. Um, Carolyn talked about changing a few things with her grading feedback. Um, but other than that, we haven't had any huge things yet that we've had to change. And the classroom platform seems to be working very well for this. I'm a co-teacher, so I'm getting all the comments that kids are submitting and they're doing a real nice job with their work overall.
How many additional students can you add and report you have to add?
For staff members? I would say probably about seventy-five.
Often do the numbers change? You know, like they go virtual, back to in-house? Would you see one way or the other, more of the other?
They change often. Um, we review progress on every Friday and when we send students. So as a team, um, we meet every Friday and vote for our list of students that have received three little progress warnings or more. So after the third little progress warning, in a semester, you're able to release a student. You're not required to. So we meet and discuss every scenario with that student. Everybody's there to give all of the information that someone has that another person might not. Um, and then the student advisors are contacting students and families when that first warning goes out. The teachers are contacting the student's family and setting up meetings when the second warning goes out. And then I'm spending a lot of time, well worth it time texting and calling all of the families that have gotten both the warning. Or fourth, um, I was doing that, for example, today, um, it takes hours. But I think out of the thirteen kids in the first group that I texted, I had messages back from eleven of them already. And we were working out plans and coming up with changes that needed to be made in classes, like the communication was phenomenal. And that is something that they just keep saying over and over. They're so thankful for. One mom called, her daughter was in tears because she'd have gotten a text and she was worried that she was gonna get kicked out. So we had a great conversation about what that looks like to stay. Um, so it's been a really great opportunity to connect with them. So tons of it announced, we meet all the time to discuss that. We try to release them at, at a time period that makes sense for them to. So the end of our, we do a quarter system now of our classes, so, um, November fourth is the end of our quarter. So if we're releasing students, it'll be right away at the beginning of that week, so they hopefully get back in somewhere else and start. Get some credit earned, just go accept for personal stuff. Things need to change.
You know, a big back to the kids, I mean, negative stuff as far as time or, uh. I don't know how good instead of regular school.
Yeah, yeah, we sent out a student climate survey and looked carefully at those results. Um, not a lot of negative feedback. A couple of the, um, students that give the negative feedback, we weren't surprised by the feedback. But if there are any that we can address, do address them right away. Same with parents, I, I sent a survey to them as well. Um, there's some great feedback, great questions. And again, we're able to work through some things that I had no idea. They were concerned about having an issue with, and we were able to address. So I think it really helped. Do not have those surveys be anonymous. You know, sometimes it's, it's nice to make them anonymous, but if they are, then I can't. Address someone's specific issue that can usually be solved.
Good things. Yes, you have to guess.
Can I ask you one more question? I'm just looking at the enrollment basically up to. Middle school, seventh, eighth grade. Very, you, is there an opportunity to approach homeschoolers? As I know, homeschoolers were some of the first adopters, but as we're reaching out on. It seems like we could have a pitch, because it. You get free curriculum on, you have certified teachers that can support your kid. I think that would be an opportunity for some enrolled.
Yeah, I agree. We have done some of that through different Facebook groups that some of the teachers are in.
I didn't get a chance to talk to anybody after we talked today, by the way.
That's okay. Yeah, we, so we have a flyer created that we share, uh, closer to open enrollment. I have a contact, uh, who's in charge of the local homeschool network email group, so I share that with her. The younger grades can be a little tricky because a lot of the families tend to be looking for more of a.
Question.
Question based or, uh, live classes. And we don't have live classes every day, so that's been a little bit of a drawback. Um, some families though decide that after they've done that, that is too big of a, to have to be on it to attend. He did this year and a full again, I want to say four or five local, um, elementary students that happened from school. So that's a first and a last, but that's happened. So that's exciting this year.
Cindy works at the Y and I know they have a lot of homeschoolers that come and provide your physical activities. So there's probably a network there that they're here, you know.
Probably surprised them, the high school teachers, I didn't follow the directions. And uh, ours is, ours is going to encompass, uh, one, all of one, one point one, all the way through one point six. And a little bit on four, uh, but as, as we got through it today, um. Really, everything, everything that in the, um, strategic plan that you've outlined. For the, for our high school kind of scaffolds and builds all to the one culminating event in that senior capstone or that, um, portrait of a graduate. So I wanted to share with you tonight kind of what, um, our team has worked on and what we brainstormed and then get a little bit of feedback on. What the kind of your expectations are for our portrait of a graduate or a senior capstone. And I've got a couple of examples that other schools have done to show you and then get a little bit of feedback of direction you'd like us to take. I've got some ideas, um, but want to get your feedback as well. Arrow step with it. Uh, so one point one for us, the first side's already planned is, is really a work in progress. We're looking at how the, how the grand portfolio from K through twelve is going to look. Elementary is working on their end, middle school is working on their end, high school is working on our end, all kind of separately right now. And trying to figure out how that can blend and be something that goes with the student. And we've talked at many board meetings about, you know, the IEP, why doesn't every kid have their own, their own plan? This is, you know, kind of heading in that direction. Um, and so that's, that's where we're at as buildings right now. For us, um, really RJ's, RJ brainstormed this and we put our counters, um, on this. And we've created, we're gonna roll it up from the class of twenty twenty-eight, so current freshman right now. Have a Google folder in their Google Drive where they're gonna collect an artifact from every single class that they're in. Uh, we give them the examples, we give them the opportunity to do it in class. The teachers are going to help them pick appropriate artifacts. Not every artifact is gonna be a home run. Some of them might be something that they throw in there and they're not that happy with. Uh, but by the time they're done over the course of four years, they're gonna have a breadth of things that they've done that kind of encompass their high school experience. A couple of examples we've talked about are, you're in a woodworking class, maybe you've made a project you're really proud of, you made a table, you made a cutting board, it turned out great. Uh, you throw that, a picture of that project into your Google folder. Or our English language arts teachers are really, really good at conferencing with students. And so a student will start out with a piece of work and they're writing it and it won't be that great since their first try. And our teachers are pretty relentless in getting to them and revising, having them add and correct and fix. And so we can use a series of snapshots of their writing of how it started, where it ended for their final assessment. And they can use that to show growth, uh, as an artifact in ELA. Other things that we've talked about that can be included as artifacts are athletic accomplishments or athletic awards. Community leadership things and even volunteering, if there's any sort of certificates for volunteerism or some highlights there. All of those can kind of flow into what they want to pick for artifacts. The kind of the minimum for us is the school stuff, one per class, but they obviously may be important in it.
And that's, and that's what we want. We want to build good humans at the end of the day and, and show that school is important. And obviously having these sixty artifacts, like I don't remember what I did freshman year of high school. It'll be really cool to, to be able to look back and see the growth. But I think developing the person and their interests and having that be part of the showcase would be really something that I feel like our kids. Are passionate about and they'll all start to buy into that area.
In, included in this school, and there's, there's a big bridge between ACP and our strategic plan. I know, I don't know if y'all remember when Alyssa Ritchie and Tracy Trolley and Aaron Popkin involved presented on academic career planning. And the work that they're doing where that's kind of going, there's, there's gonna kind of be a merge between these two things. Because a lot of the work we're asking students to do in strategic plan is very similar to what they're doing in their academic career planning. So another piece of that, of course, is including their transcripts and including a resume. I think every student of ours at Central who goes through futures or junior year, build a resume. Uh, so that will also be included in their, in their artifacts.
The, the cool thing is to like, we're, we're not asking our teachers or our kids to do anything new. You know, they're, they're already doing this stuff. They're making the woodworking project. They're creating the ELA paper and revising it. It's just documenting it and throwing it in the drive. And that's kind of what we're asking the freshman students to do this year is coming to the end of try one here. You know, what, what great artifact from their class do you have? And that's, it's a learning curve for our teachers and our students.
And again, remember that we're, we're building from one point one all the way to one point six. Again, it's kind of the, the point that we're talking about, right? What is, what is that picture of our graduate? What, what, what makes up a six percent of graduate? Obviously, you can kind of tell from the artifact collection, sixty artifacts all the course of your four years. You're gonna get a pretty robust picture of what, of what you've done. Uh, another part of our graduates, the, the student passion and engaging instruction. Uh, tied directly together, you can't really have one adult the other, right? Our engaging instructions should hopefully fuel some passions or if a student has a separate passion, they should be able to find something. Either through the online courses that they can take, let's say part-time online students, or any variety of electives that we offer. Kids at our school, I say it all the time, I don't, I don't care what pathway you're on, whether it's an honors academic track or whether it's a track to go. Right to work. We, we have what you need. I think when you tour our new space, you want to go to work and work with your hands, we have what you need. You want to be an engineer, we have what you need. You want to be an academic or a music scholar, we have what you need. There, there's no path that we can't serve. Um, and I think that's the beautiful thing when Nate was talking to me about. Um and I think that's the beautiful thing. When Nate was talking there about, you know, St. Chris Central, what we offer, we can, we can do that for every single kid. Um so student passion and and engaging instruction, a couple of things. One, we give our student climate survey fall, winter, and spring. We've already given our fall one and nearly eighty percent of our kids are in a extracurricular that is led by St. Chris Central staff. I doubt that there's many schools in our area that have a number that high. I'm only guessing. But it's it's pretty incredible when we've got three hundred and eighty-two kids over four hundred and eighty-one that took the survey. Um all identify an activity that they are in or finding them. Uh other things that we do as far as igniting passion, showing our engaging instruction. Every spring, the eighth graders come over and they tour our building and they get to meet their teachers. Each department puts on a little demonstration. It's it's really supposed to be kind of enthusiastic and welcoming. And so Miss Crimmins class, for example, they light methane bubbles on fire. So you get a bunch of rooster and put methane in them and the kids hold in their hands and they light them on fire. Just kind of get them fired up about coming to high school, being in science. It's uh yeah, I know, I'm very funny to say. Uh the other, the other things that we do uh on freshman day one, so the first day of the school year, we we always just bring the freshmen in the building. I think that is super important. I know we've had some discussions. Uh class principals have talked about whether or not it's it's worth having an extra day. Our freshmen come in and kind of get their sillies out and they get acclimated with the building. And then the next day, when everybody's there, our freshmen kind of find their place. Uh the one thing we also have started including on that freshman day one is our extracurricular pair. So all the freshmen headed to the gymnasium and our coaches, our academic advisors, our club advisors. The sports is always a big hit in there. The kids get to tour around the gym and they get to check out all the clubs and all the sports that we have. Logan Kimberly with golf always brings in the golf trophy, likes to show off the runner-up state golf trophy. The football trophies are always there. So a pretty, pretty neat experience for a freshman. Again, just helping them to find something that they can belong to or that they're excited about. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bore you with the course handbook. But if you if you haven't seen our course handbook and what that looks like, there's little summaries of all of our classes. It might be worth your while to kind of see what we're doing in the high school. I'll talk about our trimesters and increasing grad requirements. So we went from our two semester year and went to a our our three trimester, which allowed kids to gain an extra credit, extra half credits uh each year. So we have a sliding scale where we're increasing our graduation requirements. So class of twenty twenty-five, they need eight and a half elective credits. By the time the class of twenty twenty-eight rolls through, they need ten elective credits. So they need another basically three classes if they're taking some um trimester semester classes. Why I think that's important is that's three more opportunities to expose them either to something new or it's three more opportunities to cement what they're really passionate about and get them to another level. They can take another level of science, another level of woods, another level of metal of metals or welding. And maybe we get them into a college class or again, online options. Grad requirements, I'll just put the slide four is real fast. So again, you can just kind of see a picture. I'm not sure if you're familiar, you are, you are with this. Um this is the current model of the eight point five credits, but we're going to increase that. So they get English four years, science, three credits, social studies, math, you often read, don't need to read it to you. Um and this future's personal financial requirement guidance, again, where they do a lot of ACP work, they'll create that. Pretty much aligned with what we're asking our kids to do to prepare them for if they choose to want to go to university, they're ready to. Uh other options, again, I just threw this in for graphics, you know, our welding pathway. We've got kids, we have free seniors right now that are participating in the welding academy in original high school. We're working on creating our own welding academy. But we've got kids that go take those welding credits, they get credit from Northwood Tech, and then they can apply it to going to work, going to Northwood Tech, or taking it further, transferring into Spel. Uh we have the same thing with our mechatronics courses. Uh really cool having the governor at our place the other day. Uh and to see some of our kids who are on such different traject trajectories. We've got some kids that are truly going to work there in mechatronics because they're going to go use those machines where they work. We've got other kids that want to go make those machines, build those machines and be the engineers that program and and run them. And we've got all those kids together, working and presenting to the governor of the state. Uh again, just an amazing, amazing opportunity for the kid at St. Chris Central. Other other options, other pieces that our our kids can jump into. We've got honors classes, we have AP classes, our dual enrollment and our college credits. Uh the Star College now, they enter technical diploma for electronics or welding, any industry recognized certifications. We have the opportunity, I don't think a lot of people know this, like our kids can get certified at Microsoft Office. So they can get a certificate for itself, they can get a certificate for um publishing and and some of those others. If you have a passion areas, you can get seven semesters musical or language. And and the point of that being on there is that's our LAUDY system. So to to earn LAUDY points, again, it's not just the academic career wrapped. It's also those passion areas or those things are going to going to build for kids' future. Which again is why I was a big proponent and in huge support of introducing the LAUDY system. Again, because it recognizes all the work that kids are doing, not just kind of cherry picked um areas, pathways, or courses. All right, Mr. Billcher.
Here's the real reason why we're here now.
You you take out the one point six.
Yeah. So when Tim, Tim kind of showed us this over the summer, the wheels were turning of what's what's the point of this in the end, right? Why why collect sixty artifacts from all of their classes? What what do we want to do with this? Um here's where the the wheel started turning. So picture this, in in four years, our freshmen now have all these artifacts. They've done this project and you're walking into the the commons and all seniors are set up almost with their own food, right? Their their capstone, their portrait. And they're showing off basically everything that they've done over the course of high school. Whether it be digitally on TVs, whether it be the trifle, they have their woodwork projects and things from mechatronics class out. And you're almost like a gallery walk, walking around, saying hi to these seniors as they're trying to find over rock. And they're presenting to you what they've done, some of their passion areas. Now, this is not just academics, this can be all their accomplishments throughout high school as well. Almost this showcase of of a night.
So here's, so here's, here's the how the one point one builds for the one point six. Again, you know, they collect those artifacts. We've got an opportunity to include volunteerism, especially what Mrs. Crowley is doing and planning those more volunteer opportunities. And then that that P O D document, that personalized learning plan, all those artifacts they build would would likely become similar to what I think that that River Falls and Barron offer. And so this is where we need a little bit of board input. So we very simply, when we saw Portrait of a Graduate come through the strategic plan, we Googled it, put it into Google. We said, all right, what comes up when you type in Portrait of a Graduate? And so we found it to um Decal. And this is yeah. So this is kind of what they had. So their shield, kind of their characteristics. And a little blur. Our vision, right? This is our vision for my vision. I don't know that this hits the mark for me. I don't think this is a true. I don't think this fits the, every student gets their own plan. I don't think it's reflective of every student getting their own plan. Um YZET has something very similar when you collect your Portrait of a Graduate and you see where they're at. Again, that's that seems more like a mission statement or character characteristics. But when we get to Barron and River Falls, these are, this is a little bit longer, but I think this this kind of hits the mark with with what we're looking.
And and so like this is applications for schools and scholarships. So where where this could be useful for their future, right, is if they're going to apply for scholarships and need to get a resume and and want to showcase some of that stuff. That there's there's stuff to for the kids to actually use in the future.
And it's personalized.
Not every kid, though, is going to go that route, which is kind of what we're trying to blend.
And so I think what's kind of what we stepped in having some, you know, to get to in this area, to in that, you know, the south area, the community area and academic area. This is really similar to what we're trying to collect as we have kids collect those artifacts. This career piece is very much where the ACP with Tracy Crowley and Alyssa Pritchett is coming in. And I don't, I don't mean to bore you and and go through this extensively, but obviously not fair, but this is and they kind of give a rubber for what their presentation should work like. River Falls. They actually call theirs an ACP portfolio and so there you can see they've got, they've got their own links that would cover kind of everything we're trying to build. Um and again, don't mean to go through every single page of this with you. But in your eyes, are we looking more for Decal, YZET kind of characteristics, Crest Shield? Or are we looking for, this is what each individual student at St. Chris Central has achieved, has done. And obviously we've put our own mark on it with the the presentation, the senior exposé. Looking for some thoughts.
I like River Falls one better, but I hate to know anything about River Falls.
I like the checkbox, like this is what you need to do.
But that's what makes me a little nervous too. It's like if this was me going through it, I know I'm with this as fast as I can and getting this out of the way as soon as I can.
So I think, I don't I mean, I don't know, because I'm thinking like Owen doesn't need his one right to work for us, right? So some of these things might not be specific, but there's got to be leniency to that. And there's still things that are very important. He should still make a resume. I don't care if he's no.
There is, um, she will go to tech college, just did a job internship last week. And some kids brought things similar to this to apply for them.
And that and that's what Shelley had said, her son just graduated, being actually use some of the articles that heard, you know, some of his write-ups to apply for scholarships on where it's like some use our kids going into the welding program to show, hey, this is everything that I've done. Right? You know, so I'm I'm thinking that's different pathways, but still using this to drive and help.
Would every kid have to do this or would it be an elective?
Well, we would, as we're brainstorming this, it is right now, we're at this part where we're collecting artifacts. But our goal would be that at their senior year, they would have the opportunity to kind of be expected to do this now. Are we going to say to a kid, hey, if you don't do this, you're not graduating? I don't think I'm dying on that here. Um they'll get hit by that bus. Um transportation director will get nervous. But I do think that we could be intentional with this. You know, you said Eric that, well, if I'm a kid, I'm sort of going to check my boxes. I think that I have faith in the way we can implement this in a way that it's just as natural for every kid to do it. And we're going to build in the time in the school they do it. So it's not something that's sure, it's not something that you're just going to checkbox it. You're going to sit down with the English teacher and she's going to say, Derek, this is your best work. Spelled cat correctly, well done. So we're going to go from there. They're going to, we're going to be intentional about building the artifacts and have that time to do it. And and I think we can make it meaningful for every kid and every parent.
And I think that's important because I'm just thinking, you know, as we're switching to it's okay to go into work, it's okay to go into the trades. I don't think that you should have a like, oh, the people going to college, they get this. You know, I think it needs to be valid, all kids need to be valued in everything that they're doing.
I like to hear that there'll be time to do it in school too. If you get so much homework as a parent that you just don't need it or get homework from Joe Gassics, you get homework from school, you get homework from cross country, wrestling, everything.
But it's also about, I mean, teaching kids accountability. And I think that's a big thing we need to focus on is each of you responsible for something. And, you know, man, I'm sure you revised this a few times, but how how do we get them accountable? If we're going to do this, then we got to make them accountable for it.
And you also, I mean, you have to have good communication verbal with, you know, you have to have that wherever you go. You know, you have to be able to communicate and, you know, verbally and uh written.
Well, you're right. Besides the project, there's a lot of little things in that that teach them to be adults.
The organization at fifteen years old to collect fifteen things and what what's going to be a good showcase of this class and
The socials are going to ask questions.
I'd envision it, you know, the senior exposition, like a science fair or even like a a grad party. What do you do at grad party? You get to know more about the kid, like whether it's picture boards, pictures of their artifacts or slideshows uh there. But I just think it's kind of like, hey, here's me, here's my personality, you know, this like um uh we we do with Guido Two kids, with Cayman's kids come and say, these are what I learned about myself, these are my passion areas, these are some of the things I participated in, and this was what my plans are for the future. This is me. And like, honestly, who who can't talk about themselves a little bit, right? Who knows themselves better than themselves, right? I know some have a harder time talking in our more now social, but like you said, that's a good thing. They need that experience.
How how to go into a job. And there's a lot of kids that come to our company and try to apply for a job. They have no idea. They say like a lot. How do you incorporate real world things into this project?
I think this this one is one of our pillars as well. In so many times at the high school, we see parents and families coming for sporting events and athletics, we have no problem with that. No problem getting our parents in the book without the academic piece of that is challenging. Con conferences, you know, as busy as the elementary school and what it's for, I think what if we we're inviting everybody to this night, you know, we're going at it with our freshmen and selling it to them. It's going to be a good one, you know, the pioneers of it. And if eighty kids do it, eighty kids, they got this opportunity. We don't know yet if we want to incentivize it.
So I've lots of thoughts. The one thing that I think needs to be nailed is being very specific about what the intention of this is. What are, what do we hope the kids are going to get out of it? Being very specific. I wrote down that this is a progressive thing over their twelve years. It's not just about what they did last week. It's it's the growth they've seen in themselves. It's some sort of self-reflection. I see, I see this kid that did his video tonight, the confidence that he had that we had the culinary students that won the state tournament. These kids were going to drop out of school. I mean, each three of the four kids' parents have talked to the principal about, you know, I don't think we're going to finish. And these kids were charged up and, you know, by presenting, here's something that I did. I don't think it should be a, here's the format. I like the River Falls, but it's like what that you, what do you, you know, based on these criteria, they can create their, sure, we got some frameworks, here's some other examples, but I I don't think you wanted to check the box.
And we've yeah, chatted about, we've chatted about, you know, you're in the mechatronics program. Maybe your your physical space actually for doing that is kind of in that area here of foods. Give you're there, if you're kind of a science engineering kid, maybe you're going to actually set up down in the science wing utilize the different spaces in our school as as kind of informant. Again, it's about that passion. Um it's kind of where our heads were when we were creating.
So my son-in-law went to Hamlin. He went through, um and I'm looking at his resume and like, well, didn't you do pep band or any school, you know, glee club or anything in Hamlin? He says, well, I worked full-time so I could, you know, get through school. Like, well, that's, you know, for some of these kids, that kid is working full-time. Or, you know, he was working full-time and doing the school. That is a huge thing. And so I see this capstone as being something that gives them self-confidence. And our whole thing is about being the best you can be. And so how does this capstone reflect your growth? And so how does this capstone reflect your growth and being the best human being you could be? And I, I don't, yeah, I want to give him credit for the kid that worked. Full-time, so he could. You know, toughed out school and just barely got by. My dad worked nights and took two or three classes, the minimum to get. Through, but that's what he had to do to get his high school to come. And I think we should reward those kids to take a different path in our virtual school is an opportunity for some of that. We've got kids doing stuff, so the twenty percent that aren't in extra. Most of them probably have some other thing that they're doing outside of school that's a big deal. Some are sitting home doing nothing, that's their choice. Um, but that's where I think having something very specific that what are we trying to? We're gonna put a lot of kids through this, we better know exactly what we're hoping those kids think about. And be specific, but you know, here's ten things, well, maybe you only get five of them. You know, maybe you only check off five of those things, but it's a. It's, here's a whole universe of things, and that's why I think the first two that had the shields. Well, those are the areas you might think about where you might have had growth. You don't have to check into those boxes off, but where, where, here's some different areas where you might think about.
Because kids are gonna get that and they're, they're not gonna know what to do with those, like that shield. They kind of need a specific task, right?
And that's why I thought the River Falls was kind of a worksheet, if you will, and so having something that. And I see it as a themes, it may be, I really want to get that passion engagement.
And there is more than River Falls, but then just kind of what we're showing, but yeah. You don't have to glorify it, you know.
And in addition to what you were saying, the, and it's great, I, I, I do think we should be. Intentional with a few activities that kids just inherently aren't good at, but you kind of learn throughout life, you know? Trying to be reflective. Um, set a, you know, staff would need to work with them, but you know, set a realistic goal and then when it's later that year that kid. Then you can show them, hey, you set a goal, you achieved it, comes in, the accountability part. So I think there's, it to, to allow, kind of having a template and a freedom, but I also wouldn't mind seeing some. Intentional activities that we, you know, whether it's, you know, once a year or make sure we hit on this once or twice throughout their career so that. There's some of that guidance there, not that you're pushing to do one way or one thing or another, but that you're getting them to kind of sit down and think and reflect and. Be proud of a goal or progress or whatever.
I think what you guys are looking to do is still dashing into a dragon horse, something what they want to do, right?
That's what I expect, I think.
That you get that.
I thi- I think it's twofold, um. I think one is to just to create the encapsulate the high school experience, what you did, like when we talked about be proud of something. When you look back and see where you started to where you ended. And that reflection piece, I think it's a little bit hard. If you don't keep anything, you don't have it, you don't have to look back on it, it's hard to reflect on. Who you were as a freshman or who you were as a sophomore when you found that senior, and so I think that's kind of part of the. The artifact collection, but the other piece is hopefully along that way. You found your path, hopefully you found those courses, those teachers that really stirred you to do something and take a direction. And then that should hopefully be what shines by the time you're done and you do your showcase or you do your culminating project at the very end. You've identified what that passion area is, hopefully based on something one of our staff members or experiences have, have given over the course of the four years.
The other, I'll say, word of caution. Is we're preparing kids for jobs that don't exist. So we can't specialize and say, hey, I want to be at this, well, that job doesn't exist next week. And so you need to be able to be exposed to a lot of different things that, oh, I can apply what I learned. In that class to do something else. And I think that's part of this, that A C P was, you know, you learned something here and how, how might it apply to a different career or something? But I think, you know, in the whole P L P thing. Um, Catherine is the exception that she announced in kindergarten that she wanted to be a doctor. And, you know, she's a single purpose. Well, not many kids, you know, they're gonna change fifteen different times in first grade. So, you know, so I think you can't, we have to be careful that because you wrote it down in fourth grade, you have to do it. You know, every year we have to challenge that, hey, you know, where are your skills and where, you know? Um, the other thing is unclear to me what the, the teacher support business is. On your own, you know, through the whole P L P process. Um, you know, and I hate to add one more thing to what teachers already do, but. If this is work, they're already teaching and putting in a portfolio. You know, just that little bit of five minutes with the kid as they're preparing for teacher conferences. Okay, that, I would suggest that's something that goes in your portfolio. And then they put some stuff in there about their learning style or other things that they've done. And you make the transcripts, but there may be other things. I think need to figure out what that, where are the points of intersection with the teachers? The A C P is very teacher-driven. Um, but what is the K six or seven gonna be? How much is there gonna be? And I think people really have to believe that this is important. So that's another comment I have, just figuring out, and right now we have elementary, middle school and high school all working. The P L P independently, but a challenge each of you to sort of figure out. Where that teacher guidance comes for adult is kind of helping out. I mean, this might be a place where, you know, you have. Five students that say they want to be a lawyer, you get some community guy like me that meets with them a couple of times a year and. Coaches them or an electrician or a auto mechanic or something, because that's where I think people would. You could get the community involved.
And that is, that is a big piece of the A C P going forward is pulling in, we actually talked to Abby Whitaker about. Talking to John Tackman, he's A C P environmental science class, because he's worked in environmental science, and so. That is a component that every teacher, not just those C T E teachers. Every teacher right now, we have a form where they can go in and track when they're doing. An A C P related task within their classroom, there is a guest speaker, an activity or a field trip, and then we can log that as part of that A C P process.
And Lance, I like Lance's idea, we saw, we've seen kids come here. Um, he worked for us for a while, but this is a kid that asked us to do the school bus races. And he comes and he talks about how he doesn't like talking in front of groups and he's about as passionate a speaker as you could ever imagine. And he was articulate in his way and, but he was fighting for something that he believed are those culinary kids that talked about their experience. I think it's okay to challenge them to do things that. Maybe it is a requirement, you have to present it or do a PowerPoint or something that. So you don't do it as well as somebody else, you, you've stretched yourself. It's all great stuff, I've been, and maybe at some point I could retire because, you know, I wanna. This is awesome. I appreciate your hard work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Okay, we switch over to financial reports. That's you, Dave.
I think so.
All right. So on the citizen state bank checking, we have a balance of two million four hundred thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Citizen state and money market, twelve thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. One forty-six, fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Blue side prevention, five thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. That service, one hundred seventy thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Referring them balance, two thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Now the referendum balance for three million seventy-six thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. That service account, one hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred one dollars and ninety-two cents for a total of five million eight hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-two.
All right, can I have a motion?
We'll go to the group.
Second.
Um, Derek made motion. Jeff second, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Close, motion carries. Moving on to consideration of consent agenda. I mean, the motion and the second.
Yes, we will, consent agenda. Do you have any modifications?
Uh, that was not brought over today, so we don't, we haven't anything to report on that thing yet. So Jeff made the motion and Dave second. Any discussion? Right, all in favor? Right, close, right, motion carries, now we go to administrative reports with Tim, student enrollment update.
Kind of like we talked about earlier, you can see in exhibit eleven A, you know, uh, at the top, uh, matrix there. You know, we're, we have a hundred and thirty-two seniors, uh, right now this year, you know, seventy-nine, four K, five, early childhood, ninety-seven kindergarten, so. You know, that trend will continue, um, we will have about. You know, hundred and ten-ish, uh, students, uh, as we sit right now. Uh, in, in kindergarten probably next year and graduate one thirty-two. Um, then, uh, free introduced lunch rate, we always include, it's been creeping up, you know, a little bit over the years, used to be low twenties, um, now getting into higher twenties, just FYI. Uh, again, just, uh, another, um, reason to really, uh, highlight our backpack program, which is amazing. And then our third Friday count, uh, we'll get it in there next month at the twenty-three, uh, twenty-four column in there. It's official here, and then lastly, I'd like to, um, highlight our October twenty-four. Uh, virtual charter school numbers at two fifty-four right now, as compared to two hundred and thirty-two last year, as I mentioned before. All-time high, doing, doing very well. And I thank again all the ladies in the office for putting together this very detailed report of tracking about eighteen hundred kids each month.
They still foresee funding three-year. It is a three-year average, so you don't get hammered. You know, you're one way or the other.
Yeah, so it's a three-year rolling average, and then on top of that, we have a one-year beginning enrollment. So in the first year that your two-year average goes down, we still see those funds. But then the next year, when it continues to go down, I'm not trying to show you. Fair enough, you know, but then lose that first year exemption, but you'll get a second.
Moving on to fewer for our school board, student depth and community recognition, Derek.
Um, we've got Paul Peterson, thank you, Mr. Brandon Johnson. Boy, you've done an amazing job implementing our new software for routing and trips, our bus routes and communication with families has been awesome. Even the anticipated pickups were handled smoothly and quickly, thank you. Uh, we've got recognition for Addison Colefall, Mr. Diltrick. Addison, the S C C school could not be more proud of your accomplishment of placing second at the state tournament. Uh, everyone gets to see the ups and the downs of the season and training brain, but it was definitely worth it, we represent S C C.
Thanks, Derek. You're the youngest one, that's why they give it to you. All right, moving on to core agenda items. First one up is consideration of budget, tax levy and no rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, handle fourteen.
You should have a packet in from that view with all the budget and information. Um, last week we get our general aid estimate, it was slightly less than what our July first estimate did plan ask, so that changed the numbers a little bit. Um, if you flip to the yellow sheets, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on what Jeff was talking about. On the very first, um, some bill portion of the first sheet of the revenue limit worksheet, you can see how. On line two, that was our previous three-year rolling balance, so one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven students. And now on line six, we have decreased to the sixteen oh six. So it just takes the, the oldest year drops off and then you take your. Three most current years and re-average them all. So then if you go down to line ten B, you can see that one year defining enrollment exemption. So because our student count decreased from twenty-seven to sixteen oh six. We're still receiving that two hundred and forty-five thousand this year. But next year, that amount will come off, so last year this number was like. A hundred and sixty thousand, somewhere in that range. That we are not now receiving this year because that student can't continue to job. So that was one of the things that, um. You know, in September of twenty-three, we saw a pretty significant decrease of about fifty students, fifty F T E on our September point. And now this year it's an addition of eleven. Our revenue limit, so again, on your revenue limit worksheet here, that's where most of our numbers come from. If you go to page two, you can see. On line one, where we have our base revenue, the last two percent of it was this past year. And the number of students and let me figure out how much that is per student. We were able to add three hundred and twenty-five dollars per student this year, um, by state law. And then we were also able to add a few other things, so if you go down to section one eight. You can see that we had a transfer of service, so during the summer. We had three pretty high needs special ed students moving to the district. And so we worked to, um, figure out what those expenses would be for those students. And we were able to add almost a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to our revenue limit because of that. We had to hire three additional paras and now it's from other teams too. Um, one of them had an extended school year contract and so we worked on that. And got that submitted, and then on eight E, you can see our three hundred and seventy-five thousand recurring referendum. That is now in the third year, like a re. Yep, the third year of the recurring, so that's added in. And now if we go down further to line ten. You can see that our defining enrollment exemption that we talked about is coming in here, that two hundred and thirty-five thousand. We also are able to levy additional for all those energy efficiency projects we did back in the early twenty-tens. And so that's added off for those that service payments. Um, we had about eighteen thousand dollars added in for some open enrollment kids, um, that were not counted. So those are kids that are moved into our district. And then they were open and rolling out to another district last year. But they moved in after our September count, so we didn't receive any money for them last year, but yet we had to pay another district to educate them. So they allow us to add that amount back into our. And then something that's been new the last couple of years is, is our these private voucher aids. So we have. Students that live in our district that attend private schools and they receive a voucher for that. So basically what the state has said is you, you can add that amount to your revenue limit. But then you're gonna have to pay that out at the end, so it's basically a wash in our books, so we added in, we deducted out as an expense. So let's see here. And of course we have our C aid for exam computers when we get down to twelve C. And then our personal property exemption, so those come under the revenue limit. There was another personal property exemption that is new this year. But originally they were telling us it would be a part of the revenue limit, but it's actually outside of the revenue. So that helped us all a little bit, we'll talk about that in two minutes. But that's basically our revenue limit worksheet, so you can see at the end then, that's bottom part, um, section fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. That's basically all of our levy information, what we're levying for each fund. And then our total, and you can see our levy. And then our total, and you can see our levy right there at nine dollars and twenty cents per valence. So we've been keeping that amount stable. This is the third year that that will remain at nine dollars and twenty cents.
So, transfer of service. I know at state level, the state hasn't funded special ed. Is this a hundred percent of the cost of serving those kids?
It's not a hundred percent. They take the total cost and they subtract the amount that you will receive in state aid. So that, they subtract that twenty-eight percent or whatever that is, and then you receive the rest of it. So yeah, the actual cost.
Is covered by the state one way or the other.
Well, yeah, definitely. But it'll be covered next year when we get more state aid because we spent this.
And then the other conversation at the state about vouchers, it really sucks. So we lose a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from state aid, but we're allowed to levy for it. So basically vouchers are subsidized by local taxes without any contribution from the state. It's really the whole job.
And that has been growing. So we first saw this two years ago. And I think it was less than twenty thousand dollars or somewhere right around there. And we can see now this year, it's.
And do we know where the vouchers, schools they go to? And how do we prove that they're actually being used?
I think there is, I'll reach out to DPI again. I think there is a spot where we can go and find out some information. But it won't tell us like any student information or anything like that. I think it just says basically we have super traders or that kind of thing. So, not, not super detailed. So, let's see here, you kind of got maybe a little bit off track, but I think I went through the most of the, the highlights on page one. Um, our October twenty-four certification. So our property values, we estimated at that annual meeting, it's an eight percent increase. Taking them a little bit less, they were about five point five percent. So not quite as much as what they had been the last few years. And then our July first state aid estimate was a little bit higher than what we actually received as well. That was at fourteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, and that came in at fourteen million, three hundred and eighty-five. So a little bit less. So on the next page, you can see all the changes in the revenue amounts. We did make some adjustments because at the annual meeting, we, we needed to get that information to them so early. I think it was before the Fourth of July holiday. Um, some of the information wasn't quite finalized yet, so I was able to increase some of those revenue amounts. But they were pretty, pretty minimal overall. But we made the changes with the amount that will be on levy and the amount for trader tax. Um, we did make a small adjustment to the open enrollment and, and then, of course, the state aid. A couple of the other ones that changed more significantly would be source five ten transit of aids. So we had zero and now it's at two hundred and forty-three thousand. That was the amount that's left from that restored grant. So if you remember, um, back to July, we didn't know exactly what that amount was, and we had confirmed that was the CDC. And then right below that, source five ninety, we increased. Because now with the new advanced transactions base, we are receiving basically a point five F P reimbursement from our good stack. Over that position for further application. So total received for minor adjustments of the title funds, they always give us our estimate, and then they come back later and say this is what you're actually going to receive. So those changed just slightly, they are sort of seven thirty and seven fifty. We can see overall that revenues have increased from about twenty-five point eight million to twenty-six point five million. Some slight changes again with fund twenty-seven, mostly in that twenty twenty category because of that additional para support that we needed to hire. And then in fund thirty-nine, because the, um, property values then increased by eight percent. And we still wanted to keep that no way that nine dollars and ten cents. We can see that that amount decreased then. So our total debt, repair debt service payments that are required and our debt prepayment will be about two point four million. So a little bit less than what we had discussed previously. Under the expenditures, um, the majority of the changes going for, um, staff salaries and benefits. You know, from the time we set this, the beginning of July, you still have people that have left that maybe we haven't repaired yet. Or people that notify us after that fact, that now they're leaving and we have to replace them with someone else. So I re-caused it, all the staff salaries and our health insurance credit thing came in less than our contract. So our contract was for a ten percent increase starting in January twenty twenty-five, it remained at five point five. So we agreed to sign on for an additional year or a little bit too. Yeah, so we switched our long-term disability as well. So we used to have, or they do currently have a ninety percent benefit that the district pays the premium and it's not taxable at the premium level for the individual employee. It's only if they would receive a benefit that they would be taxed on that money. We were able to change that so that it's a sixty percent benefit, but they're taxed on that premium amount now. So when they receive a benefit later, that is not taxable. So they will get that one hundred fifty.
Let's turn to the ten later.
So if they qualify.
They want to.
Yeah. So that actually saved us some money. Um, and then we did have, us, we had budgeted a two percent increase for dental insurance, it came in at, it's a little bit higher. And then the WRS also increased a point zero five. So those were both pretty minimal changes. Um, we'll talk about this on the next agenda item, but I did increase the insurance and judgments, um, function two hundred and seventy thousand to a remedy, uh, increase in the premium. Otherwise, I think, you know, pretty much everything else on the expenditure side just mimics what the revenue side was. Twelve thirty, thirteen, thirteen, twenty. And so the recommendation then at the very bottom of the third page is what we're going to approve tonight. And mostly having more questions or want to look at any additional information, we have a lot of stuff in the package. We've got, um, all of the pink pages are the property values. And certifications, the blue pages are the updated changes for the budget. And then the white pages in the back are what was presented at the annual meeting.
Light of, light of recent information, can you highlight, oh, we have budgeted for bus safety? We're not to beat that one.
Uh, so, fund E V is the same, whatever we've been doing.
Yes, yes. I actually increased it a little bit. We're, we're still not sure, like, um, how the fourth fee wraparound is gonna work out. So we just kind of put status folder.
I'll make the multi-accepted next stage of the recommendation with respect to the levy amount and no. Second.
Alright, so Jeff made the motion, Lance second. Any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Alright, motion carries. Next up, yeah, thank you. Now, consideration of approval of district liability, property and workers' compensation insurance.
So every third year we go for bids, um, our insurance, our insurance agent, he usually handles the bidding process. So we sent our information out to three different companies that he works with, that he thought would be a good fit for the district. Um, one of them responded back and said they were unable to give us a quote. So the two quotes that, that we received were from EMC, and then the second one was from Liberty. And of course, EMC is the one that we've had for many, many years. Um, the recommendation is to continue with EMC. The premium was, I mean, they were basically the same premium. But one key difference was that EMC has windstorm unhealed deductible of fifty thousand or something. And Liberty's was at a hundred thousand. So for basically the same price, they had a much higher deductible on that portion. Um, and then the other thing was, was they couldn't provide us with a worker's comp insurance quote. So just to kind of keep them all aligned, and I believe, I mean, we've been very happy with EMC, they've been very good to work with. Um, that we would recommend to.
So we need a motion? Alright, so Dave made the motion. And Brad second. All, uh, any more discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Right.
Alright, moving on to consideration of designated WASB Annual Convention Delegate and Alternate.
It was part of, Nate, Nate, he's a delegate, he's not here.
Brad has some experience to ya. I wanted to deny him that opportunity.
He was better, way better last.
Are you going to one? In January? You're out. You're out too, right?
I got a lot of. And we'll improve that one.
Probably, probably.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, so Jeff is the delegate and Lance is the alternate, but we need to vote on that. So, would like to make the motion?
Motion that Lance is the delegate. Definitely. I make a motion that Lance is the delegate, or wait, Jeff is the delegate and Lance is the alternate.
Alright. Alright, so Derek made the motion and Brad second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Oppose, motion carries, um, moving on to second readings, it's D through O for second readings and we're done.
There's a fair amount of changes, so they're highlighted potentially. So you see, um, this is the timing with, um, last board meeting and this board meeting and Barry Forbes, our legal counsel, being part-time and getting back to us. So minor tweaks, just, uh, mostly in language, uh, not really intent, but, uh, just highlight nine, ten, no changes. Nine twenty, you can just see it says the board's facility planning, just to clarify, so it's clear. Uh, was the only thing changed and highlighted. What changes on nine twenty-one? Nine twenty-two, you can see the highlights and strike-throughs, again, per Barry's, uh, recommendation. And some of this too was just, um, you know, cleaning up language. Community Task Force Committee Task Force, right? It's like, whoop. If we want to keep that consistent. Um, nine thirty, again, just, um, a lot of this has to do with what, you know, we've just have wrapped up with basically or the tail end of, um, with construction and architects and con- construction managers, et cetera. So just again, uh, cleaning up a little bit of language there, nine thirty, nine thirty-one. Language again, nine thirty-two, no changes, nine thirty-three, no changes, nine thirty-four, no changes. Nine thirty-five, just again, call it construction manager instead of building contractor, contractors, et cetera. Language, nine eighty, no changes. Six seventy-one is, uh, just a second reading. Again, we talked about it last month, just made it seventy-five dollars per day rather than breaking out per meal, just to simplify things. And then lastly, uh, one thirty-three is, uh, first reading, you know, in, in our situation with Josh resigning and filling this vacancy, you know, I always consult with legal counsel, things like this, just said, hey, I want to make sure we're doing this right, how do you do this? And, and he said, I'm looking at your policy, I want to point out one thing, um, he goes, any, so that last paragraph, any board, last sentence, any board resignation shall be made in writing its final upon giving it to the board clerk. We had board president, he says, that's actually the board clerk. I said, well, in this case, it was irrelevant because he sent it to the entire board, but technically, it's the board clerk that is supposed to be, uh, receiving. Jeff. He's the one that does all the agendas and writes all the minutes.
He writes the minutes and publishes the agenda.
Then just to be clear, it's only over next election, it's not for jogging.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that was something I wasn't clear on that he clarified. Yep.
Then will he be elected? Or, what was Josh's term? No, will he be elected for a three-year term in April?
Correct. So one, at least, this is still gonna be threes and twos, there won't be a four, uh, you know, where, maybe here where there's four board members elected.
Can I add a question on facilities capitalization? Any problem with the augers and how we're capitalizing expenses?
No, we're always adding them.
Uh, nine twenty-two.
Yeah, I'm not about this one.
Yeah. Alright, any more discussion or thoughts? Alright, so we need a motion to approve D through O. Lance made the motion and Jeff second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
And as, uh, well, we've got one more second rating, uh, next month on this board vacancy, um, then they're all done. And then, uh, we intend to do, with your permission, a five-year rotation of just every year, looking at about sixty. You know, just start the beginning again, sixty, and just looking at them, make, see if they need any updating, et cetera. And that way we get through all approximately three hundred and a five-year rotation, just, just look at them. Um, and, and then obviously as things arise.
Yeah, how do we catch the things that change?
WASB policy guy, they send out a, um, quarterly thing on that and then just, you know, through different professional development things, et cetera, as they pop up.
So make a plan. Okay, so moving on to possible future agenda items. Um, I was just making notes, so we'll have Eric give us a come, do the wrap-up.
Yep.
Um, so we'll have Nate Stark here and have him take the oath, and then we'll need to elect the vice president to fill Josh's position.
Do we just know who it's going to be?
We will.
Once he's, yeah, we'll do that at that meeting, once he's seated.
Is there anything else? For our next meeting? Okay. Um, upcoming important dates, um, this Wednesday, WASB Fall Regional Meeting at six. At the Off Broadway banquet center in Monomy, we'll meet in the middle school parking lot, five thirty. Derek's gonna grab the keys and the van. November twentieth is our board development at five o'clock here at the district office with the board meeting to follow. I think that's it. Okay, so now we need a motion to convene to close session, and whoever does that needs to read A.
Motion to convene and to close session, uh, who was going to say that you're making some advice that when actually considering a form of motion compensation from its evaluation. Actually considering further promotional compensation from its evaluation data, data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. I, Human Resources Director, end of this discussion.
Okay, so Derek made the motion. Dave second. Roll call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it is nine thirteen, closing session.